Regular meeting number 41 will now come to order. And please stand for the playing of the national anthem. Councilmember Dorance, please lead us in pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we are joined by Bishop Hezekiah Martin of Southfield Missionary Baptist Church to pray with this council. Bishop, welcome back to council.
President Harden, let's get the council members and your respective staff honored to share this evening. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we come before you with a humble and grateful heart. Psalm 1:21, first verse, second verse says, "I will lift up my eyes unto the hills with coming of my help, my help coming from the Lord which made the heaven and earth." As we face these uncertain times, we are blessed because you, oh Lord, have not changed. You are the same yesterday, today, and forevermore. We are grateful for your overwhelming kindness as well as your grace and mercy. Lord, you have revealed in us a resilience to have energy beyond exhaustion, visions over burdens, and a sentiment to keep the faith. We thank you, oh Lord, for the men and women who serve our city in leadership roles, who give so much of themselves that every individual in the city of Columbus may have a better quality of life in our city. Oh Lord, we are asking that you will provide a fresh vision, creative ideas through our city council, allow debate, but also provide a spirit of forgiveness and unity. We need the strength of their voices, and we need the insight through complications. We are also praying for their families and surround them with your divine protection while they're sacrificing their time to help make our community safe. Oh Lord, please capture their hearts and give them the wisdom and guidance to make the right choices through difficult moments. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Thanks be to God.
Thanks, Bishop. Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden. Any person who takes any actions to obstruct or interfere with the conduct of tonight's meeting may be charged with disturbing a lawful meeting pursuant to Columbus City Code 2317.12. Any person who enters those areas of city council chambers reserved for city officials or invited guests may be charged with criminal trespass pursuant to Columbus City Code 2311.21.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can I get a motion dismissed with a reading of the journal?
No.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
This week's communications received by the city's clerk's office are listed on the agenda and be published in the city bulletin, or any other communications to be read in the record.
Not at this time.
Are there any comments or resolutions by members of council, starting with President Pro Temp?
Thank you so much, President Harden. I do have a resolution tonight. Resolution 0166X-2021, to recognize a Tribe for Jazz for its work promoting jazz music and musicians in Columbus. I'd like to call Joey Gerwin, who is on the Board of Directors for the Columbus Music Commission, and Stephanie Matthews, Executive Director of a Tribe for Jazz, to the podium as I present this legislation, resolution. A Tribe for Jazz is a Columbus-based nonprofit founded earlier this year that seeks to preserve the legacy and advance the future of jazz music in our city. They encourage impactful conversations and purposeful actions in our community to preserve and promote the jazz genre and to elevate the profile of jazz musicians. They are scheduled to release a film that was shot on location in Columbus with a predominantly Columbus-based production team on October 15th. I'm happy to recognize them this evening for their work, which helps bring positive attention to our city through music, arts, and culture. Joey and Stephanie, thank you for being here. The floor is yours, and please feel free to share more with us about a Tribe for Jazz.
Counselor, please. Council President Harden, President Pro Temp Brown, and members of council, my name is Joey Gerwin. As was mentioned, I'm a board member of the Columbus Music Commission. I'm also the owner of Orange Studio Recording, local recording studio and production company. And I had the pleasure of working on a legacy film project with a Tribe for Jazz. As a musician, producer, and resident of Columbus, I've been connected to the music and art scene for most of my life. And very rarely do I encounter such high-level talent centered on such a powerful mission to preserve the legacy and advance the future of any musical genre. The scope of the film and recording project and the talented team assembled by Stephanie to bring her creative vision to John to life was a deeply meaningful experience. It is my belief that Columbus and the global community as a whole will be equally impacted through the work of a Tribe for Jazz, as they seek to inspire, elevate, and educate in telling human stories at the highest creative level. Members of council, I am honored to introduce my friend, my collaborator, and the Executive Director of a Tribe for Jazz, Stephanie Matthews.
Good evening, Council President Harden, President Pro Temp Brown, and members of council. On behalf of a Tribe for Jazz, I am honored to receive this resolution and recognition for our work in elevating world-renowned jazz musicians and engaging the Columbus, Ohio community in jazz music. I would also like to extend a special thanks to President Pro Temp Brown for her continued support and advocacy for children in the Columbus City schools. A Tribe for Jazz looks forward to being a greater collaborative partner as we seek impacts which inspire youth towards a greater belief in themselves and their futures. Our inaugural project, Legacy, John Arabagon, a solo tenor odyssey, is an innovative cinematic performance film featuring Chicago-born saxophonist John Arabagon. A first-generation Filipino-American, the acclaimed composer and bandleader has ascended to international success and has a passionate fan base throughout Europe and Argentina, which he has previously recorded and toured. Named one of New York City's 25 Jazz Icons by Timeout New York, he is a graduate of DuPaul University, the Manhattan School of Music, and Juilliard. He is also the winner of the 2008 Philonius Monk Saxophone Competition and recipient of the Philippine Presidential Award. Legacy is about Arabagon's musical history as he plays original compositions drawn from various stages of his career. The cinematic performance film is both an extended reflection on the lineage of the horn itself and a statement of Arabagon's own considerable artistic legacy still very much in formation. The film and our community outreach programs are created to lead to impactful conversations and purposeful actions, as well as preserve jazz as an art form. It's wonderful to see Columbus welcoming this work. In closing, I would like to thank Julian Melanson, Mattelli Graves, Steve Muza, Sierra Swingle, Jill House, Olivia Bell, Joey Gerwin, Dennis Harbor, Kenny Harris Jr., Jessica Rudd, Sarah Pfeiffer, Meredith Leepel, Christian DeRio Lamo, Tim Lockhart, and John Bayer. And again, thank you, President Pro Temp Brown, for support of this resolution and our further desire to create a greater platform for inspiration, positivity, education, and elevated thinking. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and I move for adoption.
Clerk, please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Dorance, favor Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopt it.
Thank you so much, and congratulations.
Thank you, Councilmember. Congratulations.
Councilmember Mitch Brown.
Thank you, President Harden. I don't have any resolutions this evening, but I would like to take a few minutes to introduce the Safety Director for the City of Columbus, Mr. Robert Clark, to all of my colleagues and to the community. Mr. Clark, who is present here in chambers today, was appointed Director of the Columbus Department of Public Safety on September 3rd. Director Clark brings 35 years of local, federal, and international law enforcement experience. Director Clark, the podium is yours, sir.
Thank you. President Harden, Pro Temp President Brown, distinguished members of council, and present guest. It is my honor to stand here before you today, not just because I am the new Director of Public Safety, but because I have the opportunity to serve the great state of Ohio and the city of Columbus. I left Ohio in 1995 when I joined the FBI and traveled to Chicago, Los Angeles, and literally around the world, particularly with Attorney General John Ashcroft, where my second day was 9/11. And I always like to tell the story that I had the opportunity to actually witness not just the tragic events of that day, but law enforcement change globally. As I have worked my way back to Ohio, I know that that is God working. I know that in my life. And I intend to serve the city of Columbus, my home state of Ohio, with integrity, equity, transparency, steadfast leadership, and the ability to listen. The things I've had the opportunity to accomplish, which you can read in my resume and bio and all those places that it's listed, was because I understood the value of partnerships. I understood the value of listening to stakeholders. The successes on those papers may say me, but believe me, there was a tremendous team behind me that helped me build that. Right now, today in the city of Columbus, we have a tremendous team of public safety personnel. We have a new chief with Chief Bryant, Chief Hap, who I had the opportunity to spend two and a half hours with today, talking to him, and others that I've had the opportunity to talk to and looking forward to working with. And I know and feel very confident that we have individuals who are present in Columbus right now who are committed to listening and partnering with our community. Here's the things I like to say about law enforcement in 2021, that we are far beyond the age where we can apply law enforcement and public safety, beyond that which the community understands, beyond that which the community will participate in, and beyond that which the community will accept. So for the guests who are present here today from the community, they should look forward to talking with me, meeting with me, meeting with the chiefs, so that we can begin to understand what is it that we need to do in 2021, not what we did in 1996, not what we did in 2000, but what do we need to do today? I recognize where the violence is today. I do. And I have recognized that for quite some time, but I liken it to all the other places that I've been, like Los Angeles, like Trinidad and Tobago, where the homicide rate and other violent crime rate was out of control. But because we brought partnerships and we brought stakeholders to the table who would lend resources and personnel and effort and energy to those problems, we were able to solve some of those problems. We certainly recognize today that the answer is not just law enforcement. Trust me, I have not had an opportunity to meet a lot of the women and men for the Division of Police, but I know there are dedicated women and men who are going to work every day to serve this community. And I intend to bring leadership, partnership, collaboration, and most of all, participation with our community to make sure that we are delivering the services that are necessary across Columbus in all of public safety, and that it appears to be very equitable and transparent, and most importantly, accountable. I leave you with this, and this is something that Attorney General John Ashcroft shared with me a long time ago, that it is never the wrong time to do the right thing. It is never the wrong time to do the right thing. And I promise and commit to you today that my administration and the chiefs that I have the honor to work with will seek out those opportunities to do the right thing. Thank you very much.
Council President, have you just heard from the Safety Director? I have nothing else to add, sir.
Thank you so much, Councilmember, and welcome to the team on behalf of this council, on behalf of our Safety Chair, Mitch Brown. We look forward to working with you. We too believe in partnership and collaboration and stacking cans as we address not just the current safety issues of today, but how do we reimagine safety going forward as a community? And we'll do it in partnership with you, so welcome.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dorance. Councilmember favor.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Just a brief announcement, tomorrow, September 28th at 7:00 PM, council will host the first virtual Hispanic Heritage Month celebration. As part of the ceremony, City Hall will be illuminated to honor the contributions of Latinos in our community. The event can be livestreamed on the city's YouTube channel and Facebook page. And finally, on October 13th, we will host a Latinx Town Hall event to hear directly from our Latinx and Hispanic residents about their experience in Columbus. I look forward to these upcoming opportunities to engage during this month of celebration and education. For additional information about the Hispanic Heritage Month events, please contact my legislative assistant, Anissa Lieben, at AALIBAN@Columbus.gov. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Remy.
Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I have one announcement this evening. The City of Columbus Council Residential District and Commission will continue their working sessions and will be meeting this Wednesday, September 29th, beginning at 5:30 PM. Next Tuesday, October 5th, beginning at 5:30 as well. And the presentation, the next map draft, will be next Thursday, October 7th, beginning at 5:30. You can view these working sessions live via YouTube, Facebook, or CTV Channel 3. For more information about the work with the CRDC, please visit www.columbus.gov/districtingcommission. If you have any questions or would like to submit feedback, please email CRDC@columbus.gov. And that is all I have this evening. Thank you very much, Council President.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Tyson.
Thank you. Yes, I do have a resolution this evening, and I'm going to ask Cheryl Grapanino and Amy McCormick to please come to the podium. And it is Resolution Number 167X-2021, to honor and celebrate Mrs. Cheryl L. Grapanino for her years of distinguished service as a coordinator for the Local Food System Strategies and the Center for Public Health Innovation at Columbus Public Health, and to applaud her for improving the quality of life for residents of the city of Columbus and central Ohio. Whereas Cheryl was a core member of the team that led the development of the city of Columbus and the Franklin County Local Food Action Plan. Moreover, she helped provide strategic support to include the adoption of the plan by Columbus City Council and the Franklin County Board of Commissioners in late 2016. Whereas under Cheryl's leadership, more than 1,200 Columbus and Franklin County residents and food system stakeholders helped inform the plan's four goals and 27 actions which seek to increase coordination and communication among new and existing food system efforts, increase access to and education about healthy, affordable, local food, increase the role of food in economic development, and reduce food-related waste. Whereas Cheryl, since joining Columbus Public Health, has represented the city of Columbus and the Columbus Public Health on the Joint City-City Local Food Team, led by the development of the Local Food Board, and supported the Franklin County Local Food Council. And indisputably, she has been the driving force behind many of the local food system successes. Whereas under Cheryl's leadership, more than $300,000 in local funding has been directed toward farmers' markets, farm-to-school, and community gardens, and over $600,000 in USDA grants have been awarded to local projects. Cheryl supported the launch of the Linden Farmers Market and the Farm Share program to increase access to healthy, affordable, hyper-local food in the communities' most vulnerable neighborhoods. She also led the efforts to implement changes to the city of Columbus's zoning code, changing the code to allow onsite sales of fresh, unprocessed fruits and vegetables. This allows local growers to have fresh, healthy food available in their neighborhoods where the food is grown. Cheryl also has played a key role in developing the nationally-recognized Columbus City Schools' Farm-to-School Program to include support for almost $200,000 in USDA farm-to-school grants. Whereas Cheryl helps support the Ohio Farmers Market Network, a 501(c)(3) organization representing the interests of farmers' markets throughout Ohio. Her backing has led to stronger farmers' markets throughout the region, small businesses can now thrive, and Columbus residents have better access to healthy local food. And in 2020, the city of Columbus realized close to 96% increase in SNAP sales from the local farmers' markets in the city of Columbus and Franklin County. And whereas Cheryl was able to provide strategic leadership as part of the Columbus Public Health's Public Information Team Call Center, while simultaneously supporting local food efforts when the COVID-19 pandemic hit the city of Columbus in early 2020. Cheryl has also supported Columbus Public Health's Women, Infants, and Children WIC Program in 2020 and 2021, ensuring that more than $80,000 in WIC Farmers Market fruit and vegetable coupons were distributed each year. This program provides WIC participants with fresh, local, healthy food and provides economic opportunities to local growers. Whereas Cheryl's also helped to plan and implement highly-successful, the Vax Cash Program, that helped Columbus Public Health to increase community vaccination rates at a time when rates were declining around the nation. Now therefore, be it resolved that this council of the city of Columbus, that this council does hereby express its profound appreciation to Mrs. Cheryl L. Grapanino for her years of distinguished leadership and service as a coordinator for the Local Food System Strategies and the Center for Public Health Innovation at Columbus Public Health, and applaud her for improving the quality of life for the residents of Columbus and central Ohio. And now, before I make any additional comments besides the resolution, I'm now going to ask Amy McCormick, who represents Kroger on our local food board, to, she's the Vice Chair of the Local Food Action Board, to be able to share some comments in regards to Cheryl's amazing work with our city. The floor is yours, Amy.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, President Harden, and council members. I thank you for inviting the Local Food Action Plan Board to recognize Cheryl for her amazing and outstanding leadership. As a board member and vice chair, I have had an amazing opportunity and pleasure of experiencing Cheryl's energy and success on several projects that have positively impacted our communities. I wanted just to take a moment to share a few of those, some of them, Councilmember Tyson's already kind of provided some information, but go a little deeper. During the Local Food Action Plan development process, Cheryl and her team had identified that Linden residents wanted a farmer's market in their community. And in July of 2018, with help from OSU Extension and Franklin County, Cheryl and her team were able to gather partners to develop and launch the Linden's Farmers Market. 2018 was great. 2019, we had 32 vendors, 10 based in Linden, 22 of those being minority and women-owned. And we also served 3,500 customers, most who lived in the Linden zip codes. The market did not operate in 2020 due to COVID-19 and had limited offerings in 2021, but through Cheryl's leadership, their planning is underway for 2022. In the summer of 2020, with financial support from the Columbus City Council, Cheryl was instrumental in locating additional funding, some of that coming from the Kroger Zero Hunger Zero Waste Foundation, so that the Ohio Farmers Market Network was able to conduct a 10-week pilot program to support local farmers by bringing more fresh and local produce to our communities, called Farm Share, which is Farmers Supporting Health and Racial Equity. The program was designed to engage Black growers and Black-led community organizations that serve Black residents. In 2020, the pilot season supported five local producers, engaged six host organizations, purchased more than 2,500 pounds and 42 varieties of local fresh produce, and we served 1,400 residents, approximately 84% of those identified as Black, Indigenous, and people of color. So the project returned this year, and we offered a longer season, serving more residents, and the results from this year will be available in October. And thanks to Cheryl's leadership, I'm sure they will exceed the year prior. Being personally a farmer outside of my work at Kroger, this one got me really excited when Cheryl reached out. St. Stephen's Community House Farm and Linden McKinley STEM Academy Ag Career Path. So many of our young folks do not know where their food comes from. They think that we're making it in the back of the store, at a Kroger store, and they just pick it up and go out with it. That is not the case. So these two organizations represent two of the most significant urban agriculture assets in the city of Columbus, and, as you know, they're located just a little more than a mile apart. So Cheryl, she has supported the revitalization of St. Stephen's Community House Farms' resources, fostered a partnership between them so that the youth in Linden can have a first-class agricultural education experience. And she was instrumental in obtaining funding for drilling an agricultural well, installing a pump to provide water access, water is very important when you're trying to grow something. And she helped St. Stephen's secure a 2021 USDA farm-to-school grant, and that's going to help with a manager for at least two years at that location. And in 2020, the Local Food Board issued a statement on racism in the food system. Translating words into action, Cheryl sought funding to engage Kip Holly, a researcher and practitioner for OSU Kerwin Institute, to help the Local Food Board and the Local Food Team be intentional in their efforts to be an anti-racist in their work. Later this year, the Board will adopt a concise and actionable plan thanks to Cheryl's leadership. So these are just a few of the projects, there's so many more, that we could go on and on, but Cheryl made a difference in our community through her leadership in these projects. And I say thank you personally to Cheryl and on behalf of every one of us at the Local Food Action Plan Board. I have no doubt that you'll take your experience, knowledge, and relationships you've built for more than 20 years with the city to strategically invest additionally in your next journey as you move into continuing the work of improving the health and quality of those in our neighborhoods. Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Amy. Cheryl.
Thank you, Councilmember Tyson, Council President Harden, and members of council. It has truly been an honor to work for Columbus Public Health for the last 12 years and to serve as the Local Food System Strategies Coordinator since 2015. The Local Food Action Plan and our approach to implementing the plan have been recognized as a best-practice model locally, regionally, nationally, and even internationally. None of this would have been possible without the support of Councilmember Tyson, this council, the mayor of the city of Columbus, Mayor Gunther, and of course, Dr. Mashika Roberts, the Health Commissioner for Columbus Public Health. And I appreciate and am thankful for all of the kind accolades that both Amy and Councilmember Tyson have shared, but I'm excited for the future. I recognize that every day I work with amazing local food system partners who are passionate about this work. And while I'll be transitioning to a new role, there is somebody wonderful who's going to take up this work and continue to strive to reach the fair and just sustainable food system that our residents of Columbus deserve. With that, I will share with you that I will be joining the Osteopathic Heritage Foundations on October 4th of this year. They are a, as a program officer, consisting of two private nonprofit foundations, including the Osteopathic Heritage Foundation and the Osteopathic Heritage Foundation of Nelsonville. The foundations support community health and quality of life in central and southeastern Ohio, and osteopathic medical education and research in Ohio and throughout the United States. The foundations have a long history of supporting comprehensive solutions for positive long-term impacts in the lives of vulnerable populations, including those here in Columbus, and this aligns with their osteopathic legacy. Osteopathic medicine's philosophy has always been focused on treating the whole person, body, mind, and spirit, to promote wellness and prevent disease. The foundations' investments reflect this philosophy through a holistic approach to improving community health. To that end, the foundations have recently approved directing significant additional investments in two of their priority funding areas, healthy food access and behavioral health in our local communities. In my new role as program officer with the foundations, I look forward to contributing to the further implementation of the Local Food Action Plan as part of these upcoming investments in the foundations' work. I know that my experience here, my relationships I've gained, and the things I've learned from everyone around this room will help serve me well in ensuring that the work that I lead today and tomorrow will support the residents of Columbus. Thank you all.
Thank you, Cheryl. And I just want to say a couple other things that, a few other comments that certainly were
were not in this resolution. And I'm so glad that one, Amy mentioned, this relationship between St. Stephen's and the Linden STEM Academy. And there are so many, there are a number of vacant lots that were from our land bank that are now growing all sorts of produce in the Linden community, and it's based upon the relationship between Linden and Linden STEM Academy and St. Stephen's. And as Amy mentioned, that we now will have, for most, many of us who have been in Columbus and been around St. Stephen's for some time, realize that we definitely had a tunnel that was up, a tunnel that was there that used to grow food. That tunnel, based upon leadership and funding, that they were no longer growing food. Based upon this work, they will now have a farm manager. The young people will be there to learn how to grow food there. And so that's, again, another way that food, the food access, but also our young people are learning about food. But what I also wanted to say about Cheryl, when you think about making a difference, so this food plan was created, it's now five years old, we've had five years of success of this food plan. And between when local matters and talking to the community, we created this plan. My partner for this plan is John Grady. What this plan has done, under Cheryl's leadership, and there are a couple other people that have worked closely with Cheryl, that we now have this plan, that we've shared some of the many other successes. So when you think about, you never doubt what one person can do with the other group of people that are supportive of this work. This work has this board of 12 people, the board is absolutely committed, you heard Amy's on the board what Kroger has done, Cheryl is going to an organization that I have spoke to that will be providing significant resources, significant resources to this food plan. And so for what we started here, this council started and funded, is now helping to change the lives of many residents, also bringing significant dollars to support us. I think this is the only role Cheryl would have ever thought to have left us for, and it is a tremendous loss to us. But I will share that the dollars that are going to be coming, and Cheryl's still working this effort, the commitment from Columbus Public Health of, again, finding someone that will step into this work, and Cheryl will continue to help and be supportive of that work, I'm so appreciative of that. But Cheryl also represented us in Milan, Italy, as she shared our work around food waste. And so I could go on and on and on what one person with a group of committed people have been able to do to improve the lives of our community. So Cheryl, thank you so much for your work, look forward to our continued partnership in ensuring the lives of people in our community will have access to healthy food, affordable food, and local food, as well as looking at food waste and food as an economic driver. This work would have never been here without your ongoing hard work and being able to work inside City Hall, inside the city to make things happen, but also externally to work with the community. And that's really a hard, and that's not generally a gift that people have. So thank you for your work. I thank your husband for allowing you to do this work, and your two sons, who have always been out there with you in this community, helping in this food access work. So thank you and congratulations, and I just wish you Godspeed. Thank you. And I move for adoption.
Clerk please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted.
Thank you. Now I have just a quick announcement. Free COVID-19 vaccines. I'm going to name four locations, Columbus Public Health, 240 Parsons Avenue from 9:00 to 4:00, and then 9:00 to 4:00 right now, and in October the 5th, it'll be Monday, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, it'll be 9:00 to 4:00, and Tuesdays from 11:00 to 6:00. And we also will be providing the ones I'm going to mention, the $100 Vax Cash until it's no longer available. The Linden Community Center, which would be 1350 Briarwood from 9:00 to 4:00 on Mondays. Veric Community Recreation Community Center, 580 East Woodrow from 11:00 to 6:00 on Wednesdays, and then Westgate Community Center, 455 Southwest Gate from 9:00 to 4:00 on Friday. So please get your vaccines, if you want to get a vaccine, these are the locations, and you'll get the $100 Vax Cash. If you have questions about the vaccine, please call 614-645-1519. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. I just have one resolution, and it's in keeping with our ongoing month-long celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month in the city of Columbus. So tonight, I have a resolution recognizing Ohio Hispanic Coalition and all the services they provide for residents around the city. I too am excited to be, to join Councilmember Favor and the community tomorrow evening as we, as a community, celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. But I don't know if Jose Vicente is on the, with this, well, I will go ahead and just, again, acknowledge the work of the Ohio Hispanic Coalition. I was able to visit with them maybe two weeks ago, and for the services they provide, for the interpretation, for the after-school programming that they provide to this community, we are extremely grateful. They are an amazing community partner, and their necessity was shown even more during the last year and a half during COVID and our work that they've done. So for that, we're very grateful, and I move for adoption of this resolution. Clerk please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Adopted. Are there any comments from our friends in the other lecture office, the city clerk, city auditor office? Seeing none, at this time, I request the following ordinances to be removed from the consent action portion of the agenda, ordinance number 2401-2021. Are there any other requests by members of council for removal of our ordinance? Seeing none, may we now have the motion to weigh the reading of the 30-day legislation on tonight's agenda? Clerk please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Thank you. Will the clerk now read to the record the ordinance numbers of 30-day legislation?
Finance Committee Ordinance 2374-2021, Public Safety Committee Ordinance 2354-2021, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2249-2367-2021, Economic Development Committee Ordinance is 2402-2403-2021.
Seeing no speakers, on first reading, the following ordinance appear on our agenda as consent action. Will the clerk now read those into the record?
Resolutions of Expression 169X, 160X, 168X, 164X-2021, Finance Committee Ordinance is 2244-2262, 2282-2345-2021, Education Committee Ordinance 2408-2021, Recreation Parks Committee Ordinance 2317-2021, Public Utilities Committee Ordinance is 2181-2231-2283-2021, Neighborhoods Committee Ordinance 2393-2021, Public Service and Transportation Committee Resolution 141X-2021, Ordinance is 2148-2327-2329-2392-2021, Housing Committee Ordinance 2450-2021, Health and Human Services Committee Ordinance is 2344-2350-2376-2387-2391-2021, and appointments from Mayor's Office numbered A0168 and 176-2021.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Seeing no more discussion or question or comments about the consent portion of the agenda, I may have a motion for approval of these items.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed. We will now proceed with the second reading of 30-day tabled emergency legislation. The first committee to come before council is the Finance Committee chaired by President Pocim. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight, I have just one ordinance in finance. It is ordinance 2355-2021, to authorize the Finance and Management Director to establish various purchase orders for fuel and fueling services on behalf of the Fleet Management Division per the terms and conditions of various previously established universal term contracts, to authorize the expenditure of $1,400,000 from the Fleet Management Operating Fund and to declare an emergency. The Fleet Management Division maintains approximately 6,000 vehicles. This authorization is specifically for purchases of fuel by individual vehicles through the services provided by Wex Bank. Emergency action is being considered to ensure the uninterrupted availability of fueling services for city vehicles. Are there any questions from colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
And President Harden, that's all I have on my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next committee to come before council is the Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilmember Mitch Brown. Councilmember, floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, I have ordinance 2339-2021 to authorize an appropriation of $4,842,064.92 from the unappropriate balance of the law enforcement contraband seizure fund to the Division of Police to fund travel and training needs and to purchase equipment, supplies, and services. Equitably shared funds, or seizure funds, as we commonly refer to them, are federal financial assistance subject to the provisions of the Code of Federal Regulations. The seizure funds program is a powerful tool that provides valuable resources to state and local law enforcement that may not have been otherwise available. These funds must be used in accordance with federally identified guidelines for the purposes that directly supplement the appropriate resources of the Columbus Division of Police. These funds will be withheld from the Division if the governing body requires or directs specific expenditures of seizure funds or the expenditures for non-law enforcement purposes. Assistant Director Speaks is available to speak to specifics and the importance and benefits of the seizure fund. Director Speaks. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Chair Brown, President Harden, and U.S. Council. This ordinance funds a myriad of routine expenditures from throughout the Division of Police. These expenditures are funded via the seizure fund, which, as Chairman Brown stated, they're overseen by the Chief of Police. On behalf of Chief Bryant, who wanted to be here in person, but I'm afraid she was unexpectedly detained, I recommend funding of these routine expenditures. Thank you.
If there are no questions from my colleagues, I move for passage.
Second.
Clerk please call the roll.
Brown, Brown, Doran's favorite, Remy Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Council President, if I may, that's all I have on public safety. May I move to rules and reference?
Please.
Thank you. In rules and reference, I have ordinance 1663-2021 to amend Chapter 2307 of the Columbus City Codes with new provisions regarding human trafficking and sexual exploitation. For years, residents have approached my office and the Division of Police with concerns about the pervasiveness of human trafficking and prostitution in their neighborhoods. Their concerns are warranted as Ohio ranks fifth in the nation for the number of trafficking cases, according to the National Human Trafficking Hotline. This legislation is one aspect of our efforts to address this community issue holistically and compassionately. Historically, the consequences for prostitution have unjustly fallen on our neighborhoods and individuals who sell sex. Often, these sellers, for lack of a better term, are victims of trafficking and exploitation. This proposal focuses on additional accountability for buyers while providing support for those who are exploited. In July of this year, this council approved nearly $500,000 in grants to support organizations providing direct outreach to victims of trafficking and pathways to exit this lifestyle. Organizations such as the Salvation Army, One Divine Line, Two Health, Out of Darkness, She Has a Name, and Sanctuary Night provide exceptional outreach and engagement to trafficked individuals. While the grants provided to these vital community-based organizations will help support our most vulnerable residents, the legislation approved tonight will generate an ongoing funding source to sustain these supportive services. Ordnance 1663-2021 recommends sentencing guidelines focused on reducing recidivism for individuals that purchase sex and enhanced diversion programs to better educate offenders on the impact of their behavior. In addition, the fines paid by buyers will be directed to a fund which will be earmarked to provide services for victims of human trafficking. I'd like to thank my colleagues for recommending amendments to this legislation, which allow judges and prosecutors sentencing discretion, as well as a commitment to review the impacts of this legislation and a reevaluation after two-year period. I appreciate the support and guidance of the survivors, reform buyers, community members, and human service providers in developing this legislation. I would also like to thank the Columbus Division of Police PAC Unit, Police and Community Together, the City Attorney's Office, representatives from Katz Court, and my staff for their engagement in working to address this issue in our community. Before I move for passage, I would like to recognize a few speakers on this legislation tonight. Those individuals, please state your name and any organization you are affiliated with, and you have three minutes. Rachel Winning.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. My name is Rachel Winning. I'm a Hilltop resident, attorney, and mother. This legislation will not reduce human trafficking or its related societal issues. Any positive impact which comes from increased funding could be accomplished with direct grants from the city to nonprofits or an increased Health Department budget. The legislation will create net harms to the city's residents. This ordinance is exactly the opposite direction of where our city should be moving. It remains a classist and racist piece of legislation. Wealthy, more likely to be white violators of this law will hire excellent attorneys to defend them and will plead to lower offenses, while poor and more likely Black and Brown violators will be financially harmed, sending some farther into poverty. They will sit in our unsanitary jails, losing their jobs because they can't show up for work, which will in turn increase the demand on our already underfunded city public services. The sex workers and their customers will now have even greater reason to hide from the sight, putting the sex workers at more personal risk of being assaulted, raped, or killed with no one nearby to witness it or to intervene. In addition to this, the police will now have another penalty they can use to threaten sex workers and coerce them into sex acts, which is rape. This is not a made-up scenario. This is exactly the type of coercion and abuse of power that Columbus police officers have committed during recent years, most of which has gone unprosecuted. And some of these officers are still working in our neighborhoods. To give them more power and control over sex workers is inhumane and shows a lack of interest in the safety of these sex workers. Increasing penalties for sex work for providers or customers creates more harm to sex workers. That harm is not going to be offset by dollars to nonprofits. Nonprofits cannot erase physical and emotional harms perpetrated by Johns against sex workers. Sex workers need services, support, and the removal of criminal penalties so that the law can protect them from abusers. Increasing penalties does not reduce the demand for sex work. I know that all of you have been provided with ample studies and information showing this. This legislation is moving our city backwards toward further oppression of women and other LGBTQ people who are sex workers, and so I'm asking that you vote no on this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Winning. Also, I have available to speak this evening is Ms. Vanessa Perkins.
Hi, everybody. I'm Vanessa. I'm hearing a little bit of an echo, so I hope you guys can hear me okay. Okay, so I have thought about this legislation, and I have mixed feelings about it, but ultimately, my simple mind is something has to happen on the buying side of it. As of right now, I'm not seeing a whole lot that is happening, so to increase that a little bit, I think is okay. In my mind, it's just, it's kind of like, with, this is going to probably sound really superficial, so please forgive me, but in my mind, it's kind of like my kid. I'll give him some consequences, and he'll remember certain things, and then he'll start to forget the seriousness of it, and he might do it again, and then I increase the consequences a little bit, and then he'll remember it better next time. And he'll also maybe share that with his friends, and that's my, part of my hope here. I can understand there's going to be all kinds of different sides and takes to this, but we've always given consequences to the sellers, and that's another story. but now we're just starting to look at the buying as a real issue, and I think it's really important to do that. And I really like the fines going toward programs to help survivors of human trafficking. I think that's great, and I think that it's very needed, so that's just a, I don't know, I guess that's just all I have for now. I feel a little underprepared. I've been really busy this week, and I'm literally picking up my son from track. So if you guys have any questions for me, I would love to answer them. In my experience while I was out there, there are buyers that, who are like, okay, they aren't out there to buy rape or to hurt anybody, but there are buyers that are out there to buy rape and to dominate and are spreading diseases and are taking things back to their family members, you know, and so it's not like they are innocent, and so consequences do have to happen, I guess. That's just kind of where I stand with it, so let me know if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perkins. And also, I have Mr. Chris Stoller.
Good evening, members of council. My name is Chris Stoller, and I'm giving this testimony tonight in favor of the proposed amendments for the Solicitation Code. So I'm doing so as a board member of She Has A Name and also a longtime teacher at what is known as a John School here in Columbus for men who have solicited sex right here in Columbus. Ultimately, I'm speaking to you as a longtime anti-trafficking advocate who has worked with She Has A Name for more than 10 years here in Columbus and has seen firsthand how change is possible for the men who are fueling the demand for paid sex. Our vision at She Has A Name is to see all those impacted by human trafficking restored into society, and then includes the men, even those who solicit. We acknowledge the seriousness of their crimes, but we believe in redemption, and we know we will never end the issue of human trafficking until we start dealing with the demand side of the equation, and that starts by understanding the men who are fueling this demand and the reasons that led them to solicit. It's why for more than three years, I have personally educated hundreds of men who graduated through our City Attorney's Office John School Program and a private one, and I've learned that, you know, the reasons men solicit are complex. Some say they do it because they're lonely, others because they're depressed, but most of these men have said that they believe change is possible in their own lives. So we have good data from more than 400 men who have graduated from the John School Programs here in Columbus, and more than 80% of them said they would change their mind about paying for sex if they knew that many of these women were homeless, victims of violence, and started at a very young age. These are topics we discussed during the John School Program. This local data, which comes right here from Columbus, mirrors national data that we've seen. Demand Abolition did a report in 2018 of more than 8,000 U.S. men who had solicited, and they discovered that 1/3 of active buyers strongly agree that they do not want to do it again. It's a sentiment shared by most former buyers. Now, that report advocated for a lot of the types of issues you're advocating for today with this proposal: fines, arresting and educating buyers, and developing John School Programs. I know some of the data you have been provided with on the other side, I've looked at it, I reviewed it, a lot of it, it's quantitative, not qualitative, and it's coming from international studies. The data that I just shared with you is local, and it's also a qualitative national study. We won't change every buyer, but we must try to help them, and I know from personal experience that we can help them, that change is possible. In addition to the data I just shared with you, I want to leave you with one story, one testimony, of a young man named Ryan, who I got the privilege of meeting while teaching at the John School years ago. This young man's story proves that increased penalties like you're considering today can convince men to stop purchasing sex by fundamentally changing their views towards the women we're all trying to help. Just wanted to share this story that Ryan gave me permission to share, and Ryan is a solicitor. He said, "The program opened my eyes to the world of trafficking, and I knew in my heart I wanted to help in any way possible. Through my experience with the John School Program, I found a relationship with God and gained a better understanding of the world of trafficking that prior to this experience I knew nothing about. I wish more than anything I could take back my mistake, but in a strange way, it's made me a better person. I now know I can move forward and raise awareness with dreams of ending this horrible issue." Ryan has since graduated from the John School, become a volunteer with She Has A Name, and now teaches with me regularly at the John School. And he's not alone. Two other graduates over the last few years have similar stories. They are now helping the men that they used to be. They are living proof that change is possible. So please, change our Solicitation Code. We don't want a city where the average fine for soliciting sex is about 70 bucks, half the cost of a speeding ticket. We want a city where more women get help and more men like Ryan can transform from solicitors to advocates for the very women they once tried to solicit. And at the end of the day, that's what this fight is all about. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stoller. Do any of my colleagues have any questions for our speakers who are representatives from the Columbus Division of Police or the City Attorney's Office who are present tonight? If not, with that, I move to remove this ordinance from the table, and I ask for a voice vote.
Second.
Clerk please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Before I cast my vote, I first want to extend my gratitude to Councilmember Brown and his team for all the work they've done on this piece of legislation. I know that this is not an easy topic to address, and I truly appreciate the effort put towards attempting to end the demand for solicitation and sex work. But tonight, I have to vote no on this ordinance, as I strongly believe there needs to be a greater focus on reducing criminal penalties for the vulnerable individuals involved in sex work, whether it's by trafficking or by choice. To continue to criminalize and extend trauma for victims of sex work is unacceptable for me, and I want to see a greater focus on how we can provide justice for the individuals involved in the work beyond Katz Court. I look forward to this continued dialogue on this topic and hope to see more efforts in the future that go further to protect the victims in this space. Thank you.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes, and I too want to thank Councilmember Brown's team for the work and also taking the time to really listen to other council colleagues to be able to change this legislation. One part that I'm very excited about is that will we review, well, council will be reviewing this every two, look, the first two years to see what changes have occurred and if there are any adjustments that need to be made. So I thank you for your work, and my vote is yes.
President Harden?
Yes. I would also like to say, I didn't get to say this earlier, I want to thank particularly the lady who spoke, who gave personal, took the time to give a personal testimony on a very difficult issue. This is not an easy issue for anyone to talk about, and as this council has debated now, gone back and forth for the last five, four or so months, I just appreciate all of my colleagues taking it very seriously, being open in the dialogue, listening to the many organizations that have come before us who have advocated, regardless of which side of the support or opposition to this legislation or this means, are partners with this council and with the City of Columbus, and will continue to be so. So removed from the table.
I now move to amend as submitted to the clerk, and again, for a voice vote.
Is there a second? Clerk please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown?
No.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
No.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes, amended.
And I now like to move to, for passage as amended, and I call for a voice vote.
Clerk please call the row.
Ms. Brown? I know I'm going a little out of order here, because everyone else did their comments on the first round, but as we're considering final passage, I want to thank Councilmember Brown for the attention to the topic of human trafficking and the work on the legislation, and I know it took a great deal of work with all of our colleagues. I want to thank the community of advocates from, who have all kinds of ideas about how to solve the problem, coming to us and advocating. I have learned a great deal from those advocates, and I truly want to extend my thanks. My pledge is to continue to focus on helping the women who turn to sex work, who are exploited in that sex work. And I think about organizations like One Divine Line to Health, organizations like Salvation Army, Sanctuary Night, who do the hard work of outreach to women and meet them where they are and help them change when that's what they want from their life. That is the kind of justice work, rehabilitation work, that our community needs. I appreciate working together to pass resources to those organizations, as you cited in your opening, and that is my focus. That's, I think, how we help our neighborhoods who have to live around this problem and this exploitation, and that is how we truly change the lives of women and men who really deserve that same level of justice and rehabilitation that we have advocated for, for the women. And with that, I do vote no on the consideration of final passage. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
No.
Mr. Remy?
I'll take a moment to say a couple words as well. I too, I echo Council President Protem's sentiments and learned a lot during this process. Certainly want to thank Councilmember Brown for listening as we talked through this legislation over several weeks, months, et cetera. Removing the mandatory minimums was important to me, and something that, you know, I see as a great benefit for One Divine, Esther Flores, and the work that she's doing and others, is to take some of this funding to use to help, help in that regard, and so that part was important to me. I also have said that we need to work on what we do, I mean, there's a John School, but it's not nearly what they're doing in Cincinnati and other cities across the country, and so we've got some work to do in that regard, and my hope is, is that this will help to bolster up that type of education and that type of opportunities for people to mitigate, you know, their involvement and hopefully learn something, as was demonstrated by that testimony previously. So with that, I vote yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance is passed.
Council President, that's all I have this evening, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Councilmember Dorans. Is it you?
Yep.
I apologize. The next committee coming for counsel is the Public Utilities Committee chaired by Councilmember Dorans. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you. It's a short night in the Utilities Committee. I have ordinance number 2348-2021 to authorize the Director of Public Utilities to enter a new plan renewal of the Specialty Maintenance Craft Services Contract with Ryder Company, Inc., for the Department of Public Utilities, and to authorize the expenditure of $950,000 from the Sewerage System Operating Fund and $200,000 from the Electricity Operating Fund. This contract renewal will continue to provide specialty maintenance craft services for multiple Department of Public Utilities facilities, including asphalt repairs, various safety and security renovations, repairs of the pumping stations and flooring repairs, as well as light pole foundations and substation structure repairs. Do any of my colleagues have any questions or comments? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy Tyson, President Harden?
Passed.
Thank you. That is all I have in my committees tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Next committee coming for counsel is the Public Service and Transportation Committee chaired by Councilmember Faber. Councilmember Flores, yours.
Thank you, Council President Harden. Tonight, Public Service and Transportation, we have ordinance 2326-2021 to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into services contract with King Business Interiors Incorporated for the reconfiguration and installation of additional office cubicles, desks, and chairs to weigh the formal bidding requirements of Columbus City Code, to authorize the expenditure of up to $97,106.46 from the Street Construction and Maintenance Fund to pay for this contract and to declare an emergency. The intent of this project is to provide adequate office space accommodations for an expanding workforce for the Division of Infrastructure Management, Division of Traffic Management, and the Director's Office in the Department of Public Service. This project will require the reconfiguration and installation of additional cubicles, desks, and chairs within the Coleman Government Center located at 111 North Front Street. Deputy Director Scoco, can you please speak to the waiver of formal bidding requirements for this project?
Ms. Remy, President Harden, Councilmember Faber, and other members of council. This waiver, we are requesting this waiver this evening because we are expanding our workforce, and the original cubicles and the original office furniture was bid out as part of the construction project in the Coleman Building, and we are looking to, you know, remain cohesive with the other cubicles and have everything matching and cohesive through the whole office space. So that is why we are requesting a bid waiver this evening. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy Tyson, President Harden?
Passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2333-2021 to amend the 2020 capital improvements budget to authorize the transfer of funds and appropriation between projects within the Streets and Highways Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Public Service to enter into contract modification with Shelley and Sands Incorporated in connection with the resurfacing 2021 project, Zero Project, to authorize the expenditure of up to $3,67,070.10 from the Streets and Highways Bond Fund and to declare an emergency. The work performed to date for this project consists of repairing and resurfacing 64 city streets and constructing 157 ADA curb ramps along those streets. The work consists of milling the existing pavement, overlaying with new asphalt concrete, and replacing curb and sidewalk associated with installing ADA wheelchair ramps. Where this warranted, the plans also called for areas of full-depth pavement repair. This project also includes the removal of existing parking meter posts and designated areas and the installation of concrete foundations for the installation of parking kiosks. This modification adds the reconstruction of Dividend Drive from Diplomacy Drive to Equity Drive. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy Tyson, President Harden?
Passed.
Thank you. Council President, may I move on to housing?
Please.
Up in housing, we have ordinance 2301-2021 to authorize the Director of Development to enter into a grant agreement with the Impact Community Action Agency in an amount up to $1 million to provide rental and utility assistance as defined by the U.S. Treasury to qualifying residents of the local community and authorize payments of expenses starting January 1, 2021, to authorize the Director of Development to modify the terms and conditions of grant agreement as needed without seeking further City Council approval in order to align with the most current version of the federal laws, regulations, and guidance, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1 million from the Emergency Rental Assistance Funds and to declare an emergency. I'd like to now turn it over to Deputy Director Hannah Jones to provide us with additional comments on this ordinance.
Good evening, President Harden, Chair Faber, and members of council. Thank you for considering this ordinance this evening. We are beginning to encounter households that have reached the limitation of access to ERA 1 funds. So ERA 1 allows up to 15 months of assistance. ERA 2 allows an additional three months for up to 18 months of assistance. So this funding is going to impact for them to help provide that additional three months of assistance to households who have reached that limitation. To date, we have provided approximately $36 million in funding for rental and utility assistance to our community. If you are in need of rental assistance, both Community Impact through the apply.impacthopefund.org have an application process, as well as the Columbus Urban League. And we are beginning to ramp up our most recent cohort of 26 organizations who we hope to have online October 1st to further get more resources out into the community, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Deputy Director. And just as a point of clarification, are landlords allowed to apply for assistance on behalf of their tenants?
Yes, they are. Both Impact and Urban League have portals established that allow landlords to directly apply. There is a section of the application that does require tenant information, so if a landlord does apply, what will happen is that then Impact and Urban League will reach out to get the correct documentation from tenants as well.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments by my colleagues?
Good job.
Well, if any of our residents watching tonight are in need of emergency rental assistance, please do not hesitate to reach out to Impact or any of the other agencies that the city has partnered with for direct assistance today. With that, I move for passage.
Clerk please call the row.
Ms. Brown?
Ms. Brown?
My apologies. My apologies. We have one speaker.
Sure.
Mr. Nate Wilkins, I apologize, sir.
Not at this time. We apologized to you last week.
Welcome back to council.
Hey, do good for having me. My name is George Wilkins, 1612 Arlington Avenue. I just want to know, is this money for all year round? And also, I'm supporting this. Seem like we are leaving our elderly population, disability population, and other people that's or aging in our homes. Also, I would like to see more money idolized to this $2.3 million and 75. And the reason why I request this is because seem like we are leaving out the elderly population that's living in our homes or aging, or multi-disability people, other type of people in these homes. The reason why I question for $2.3 million is all over through the state of Ohio, not just one set of people that's renting. We have to look at all type of people that's coming from all of the cities. So I'd just like to have more clarification. Why is this like this every year, or can it be up to 10 years? So we can keep this going. This is a good idea, but I'd just like to see $2.3 million idolized to this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkins, for your continued advocacy around housing. Deputy Director Hannah Jones, I'm going to turn it over to you, but the funds that we are allocating tonight are funds that we have received from the federal government in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. These are emergency rental assistance dollars that the city has received. To Mr. Wilkins' point, we understand that there are hard-to-reach populations, like our senior populations, could also be our LGBTQ population, as well as our youth. And so the new Stable Housing Initiative, which designated, allocated, excuse me, $12 million to those specific constituents, was just announced a little over a month ago. Deputy Director Hannah Jones, would you like to provide any additional comments?
I think you captured it nicely. The process that we just did was to get exactly what Mr. Wilkins was talking about, and there are organizations that represent seniors, as well as LGBTQ and other populations. We do have a remaining balance of $18 million on ERA 2, and it does have several years for allocation, back to Nate's question on timing as well. And our goal is to further target that funding to other populations that we may not have reached through the efforts so far. So it is an ongoing process that we hope to continue to engage with the community on.
Thank you, Deputy Director, and thank you, Mr. Wilkins. With that, I move for passage. By voice.
Clerk, please call the row by voice.
Ms. Brown? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Dorans?
Yes.
Ms. Faber?
Yes.
Mr. Remy?
Yes.
Ms. Tyson?
Absolutely, yes.
President Harden?
Yes. Ordinance is passed.
Thank you. Next, we have ordinance 2451-2021 to amend the 2020 capital improvement budget to authorize the city auditor transfer of funds within the Affordable Housing Bond Fund, to authorize the Director of Development to enter into grant agreement with HNHF Realty Collaborative in an amount up to $1.5 million in support of the Lockborn Green Affordable Housing Development, to authorize the expenditure of up to $1,094,858 from the Affordable Housing Bond Fund, and to declare an emergency. Lockborn Green is a proposed 60-unit affordable apartment development located at 1836 Lockborn Road on the south side of Columbus. The site was acquired from the Columbus Land Bank. There will be 12 1-bedroom, 42-bedroom, and 8 3-bedroom units. The development will provide housing for households from 30% to 80% of the area median income, with an overall average of at or below 60% of the area median income. The development will have an onsite management office, a resident fitness facility, and community space. The development is located on an existing Cota bus line and has banks, a pharmacy, two grocery stores, and a post office within one half mile of the site. Deputy Director Jones, do you have any additional comments?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Questions or comments by my colleagues? Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. President Harden, may I move on to criminal justice?
Please.
Thank you. In criminal justice and judiciary, we have ordinance 2299-2021 to approve the settlement in the case of the Cities of Cincinnati and Columbus versus First Energy et al., case number 20CV7005, and to accept a deposit of $35,750 to be deposited into the general fund. I'd now like to turn it over to City Attorney Zach Klein to walk us through the details of this ordinance.
Thank you, Chair Faber, to the Council President, Council President Harden, and to Chair Faber. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this ordinance. This is a little bit different posture than the city of Columbus is used to bringing to council as it relates to settlements. This is a situation where the city of Columbus was a plaintiff. Many times, if not nearly all the times up to this point, the city of Columbus typically is a defendant in a lawsuit. And we ring settlements when the city of Columbus is a defendant. I know this council is very used to hearing, you know, the considerations that the city takes into account when settling a case. And one of those considerations is attorney's fees. And this is a situation where the city of Columbus, being a plaintiff, is actually receiving attorney's fees from the defendants. In this instance, it's First Energy. As this council will recall, on October 27, 2020, the city of Cincinnati, the city of Columbus sued First Energy, along with San Randazzo in his official capacity as the Chair of the PUCO, as well as Robert Sprague in his capacity as Treasurer of the State of Ohio. We alleged that the Clean Energy Rider in House Bill 6, it's a piece of legislation that I know this council and many viewers are familiar with, added more than $900 million in fees to the bills of every ratepayer in the state of Ohio that was to be handed over directly to First Energy. That rider was said to become effective on January 1st. This council will recall that at first, that House Bill 6 and the product and how House Bill 6 came to light is now the target of a federal investigation and federal indictments of many folks, including the former Speaker of the Ohio House, Larry Householder, because of the product of a bribery. That First Energy bribed the Speaker in order to get this piece of legislation passed that then added more than $900 million in fees into First Energy's pockets. In the city of Columbus, that's $25 million in fees alone for our ratepayers. So we filed suit, along with the city of Cincinnati, asking that the rider be blocked because it was essentially created through corrupt means. The long story short is, we won that lawsuit, and Judge Chris Brown of the Common Police Court here in Franklin County ruled in our favor to stop the implementation of the rider effective January 1st. Now, the General Assembly has since repealed the Clean Energy Rider, and because of that, we entered into settlement negotiations with First Energy and Energy Harbor. Out of that, the plaintiffs' fees in this case are $240,000. This council will recall that we retained Edelson, a law firm out of Chicago who has expertise in this case, who was essentially doing it pro bono, with the only exception that should we settle the case or win the case, that they would be able to seek attorney's fees from First Energy. The city of Columbus is not on the hook for any of that money. But because we also devoted time and resources, both the city of Cincinnati and the city of Columbus are receiving $35,750 each out of that $240,000 total attorney's fees. So for this council's consideration, we ask that you approve this ordinance so that the $35,750 can come back to the city of Columbus into the general revenue fund as a result of the success of this case and us saving the ratepayers of the city of Columbus $25 million. If the council has any further questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Seeing none, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That's all I have in my committees.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair Tyson? Yeah. Well, the next committee to come before council is economic development. We'll go ahead and get, you have one piece of legislation?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much, Council President Harden. I'd like to go back to page 11 of the agenda. Tonight, I have ordinance 2401-2021 to set forth a statement of municipal services and zoning conditions to be provided to the area contained in a proposed annexation of 3.8 acres in Mifflin Township to the city of Columbus, as required by the Ohio Revise Code, and to declare an emergency. I move to table this ordinance indefinitely.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Table.
Thank you, and that is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The final committee to come before council is the Health and Human Services Committee, committee chaired by Councilmember Tyson. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Ordnance number 2389-2021, it is to authorize and direct the appropriation of $25,000 within the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund, to authorize expenditure of the $20,000 from the Health Special Revenue Fund and $25,000 from the Neighborhood Initiatives Fund to pay the Columbus Foundation for Columbus Public Health for the management of the 2022 community gardening projects and to declare an emergency. The city's community garden initiative supports the city's efforts to build a fair and sustainable food system. As part of the Local Food Action Plan, community gardens improve access and education for healthy, affordable, and local food. But beyond improving food access, community gardens provide the space for powerful neighborhood level of social change. Since 2010, Columbus has, Columbus City Council has supported over 311 gardens with funding over the $340,000. And in 2021, 31 gardens were supported by this grant, including a new, one new community garden. In the effort to promote this equitable, healthy food access and social support networks, 47% of funded gardens were located in Celebrate One priority neighborhoods. And so if I add the dollars from, I just mentioned, so since 2010, there have been more than $382,000 in funding to more than 180 different, 80 different gardens throughout our community garden grant program. In 2020, the city of Columbus collaborated with Scotts Miracle Grow Foundation and Franklin Park Conservatory to launch the Urban Gardening Grant, a unified funding process for community gardens. And gardeners now have only one application and a consistent set of evaluation standards. In 2020, the Urban Gardening Grant funders were able to support 72 community gardens located in the city of Columbus and Franklin County, providing $76,513 in grants and grants and $32,495 of dollars of Miracle Grow product. In 2021, we distributed $99,551 in grants and approximately $30,000 worth of Miracle Grow products to almost 70 gardens. And this year, located in the city of Columbus and Franklin County. And if there are no more questions or comments for this legislation, there are no questions or comments, I would move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Ordinance is passed.
Thank you.
Seeing no further business to come before council, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Meeting is adjourned. We'll take two or three minutes, and we'll return for zoning.
I'm prepared whenever you are.
We will go right into zoning.
Soon as they come, let the staff come and be seated. That'd be great.
Regular meeting number 42 will now come to order. Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Can I get a motion to dismiss the reading of the Journal?
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Now, in the zoning committee, Councilmember Tyson chairs that committee and all members serving it. Councilmember, the floor is yours.
Thank you, President Harden. I have, before beginning the zoning agenda, I'll briefly explain the rules of council as pertaining to speaking before council on zonings and variances. We permit three speakers on each side, three proponents and three opponents, and we ask that they limit their remarks to three minutes on each side, and we provide an opportunity for rebuttal from the applicant. On the advice of the City Attorney's Office, anyone who wishes to speak for or against any council variance, including staff, must be sworn in prior to giving testimony. We do not, we do so prior to the beginning of the reading of each, each variance on the agenda. Anyone here this evening, so the first piece of legislation is a variance, and this variance 2356. So anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. Okay. So ordinance 2356-2021 to grant a variance provisions of section 3332.037 R2F residential district, 3312.49 minimum numbers of parking spaces required, 3332.05A area district lot with requirements, and 3332.14R2F area district requirements, 3332.19 fronting on the, on a public street, and 3332.25 maximum side yards required, 3332.26 minimum side yard permitted, and 3332.27 rear yard of the Columbusy codes for property located at 1146 and 1148 East Long Street, to permit a single-unit dwelling, a carriage house on the rear of a lot, developed with a two-unit dwelling with reduced development standards in the The applicant is Dejean Armstead. The proposed use is a two-unit dwelling and a carriage house on one lot, and the City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Near East Air Commission's recommendation is approval 801. So I'm looking for one document. Here it is. I just want to mention, we did have one letter that came to us that was saying they were against it, and I will certainly share, and I won't read the letter, but I will also just mention that part of it was based upon, you know, the cleanliness of an alley, and I will make sure that that information is shared with the appropriate department. And so if there are no questions or comments regarding this legislation, I would first like to move to amend to emergency.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you, and now I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. And the last ordinance is also a variance, and so it's variance number 2357-2021. Anyone here this evening who wishes to speak either for or against this council variance, including staff, please stand, raise your right hand, and be sworn in. I wish to tell the truth and nothing but the truth. Please answer, I will. Thank you. Ordnance number 2357-2021 to grant a variance from the provisions of sections 3355.03C3 permitted uses, 3362.01M manufacturing districts, 3309.14H districts, 3355.09C3 district setback lines, and 3372.705B building design standards on the, of the Columbusy codes for property located at 3632 Indianola Avenue, to permit an apartment building and to conform an existing, an existing and extended stay hotel in the C3 commercial district and the M manufacturing district with reduced development standards, development standards, period. The applicant is Avenue Apartments LLC, Care of Attorney Connie Kleema. The proposed use is a apartment building and extended stay hotel development. The City Department's recommendation is approval, and the Clintonville Air Commission's recommendation is also approval 8 to 0. And if there are no questions or comments for my colleagues, I move for passage.
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Passed.
Thank you. That concludes the zoning agenda for this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Any further business to come before council? Seeing none, move for passage, or move, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Clerk, please call the row.
Brown, Brown, Dorans, Faber, Remy, Tyson, President Harden.
Council is adjourned. We'll go directly into non-adjunct speakers. The first...